It's seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. For those that are not members of the commission or staff participating, if you could please put the Zoom call on mute until the point of the meeting at which your presentation will be welcomed. That would be helpful for us so we don't have feedback. Karen, can you please take a roll call?
Commissioner Young.
Yo.
Commissioner Batty.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Keen. Commissioner Keen. Commissioner Brink.
Here.
And Chair Langness.
Present. For the record, it does look like Commissioner Keen is logged in, but not visible on his camera at the moment.
Right.
The the next piece is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I ask all those able to stand and join us in the pledge.
You're on mute, Eric.
Sorry, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. My nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Well, I did that part twice, but that's okay. Next is actually I'm gonna so for those those in attendance that are not commissioners or have attended our meeting or wish to join us at one of the public hearings just prior to the first one, we'll give more details on that. But again, please keep yourself on mute. If you're having technical difficulties or some questions that are important prior to that public hearing in those instructions, you can write it into the chat and hopefully staff will be able to respond and help you with those pieces. We have to approve the agenda next. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Young moves. Is there a second? Commissioner Batty, seconds. Are there questions or Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, my question is, I'm wondering if it might be more prudent to change our agendas slightly from the order it's in to a little bit of a different order. I would like to look, think about us looking at items 10, 11, 12, 13, and 15 first, and then finish with items 6, 7, 8, 9, and 14, because the majority of those items have public hearings, and there might be lots of discussion and its potential, we may not get through some of the other items. So I think it might be in our best interest to look at doing the items that aren't public hearings first. That would be my discussion.
Donovan, can you weigh in if you've given feedback to interested parties as to what time their agenda item may arrive?
No, I chose against that one because of just the technicalities of bringing people in and out of rooms. So we didn't, I didn't provide any sort of timeline for any applicants.
Great, thank you. Is there other discussion or Commissioner Miller, were you wishing to amend the?
Well, that would be my wish. That would be my wish unless there's a, you know, everyone's opposed to it. I'd rather, I think it'd be more prudent of us as a commission to look at the items without the public hearings to maybe get through those a little quicker and then get into the the public hearing items. So if unless there's some real disagreement, I'd love to see us look at items 10, 11, 12, 13, and 15 first, and then finish with 6, 7, 8, 9, and 14.
Sir, I have no preference either way. Is there comments from other commissioners?
I'm willing to amend the motion if if that is what's desired. Tell you what, it's cleaner. I will withdraw my motion.
Commissioner Young is withdrawn. Commissioner Batty?
I was just gonna, I was the one who seconded the motion. If you want to just amend the first motion.
The motion, the motion's off the table. Would someone else like to make a motion on the agenda? Commissioner Miller?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion that we start with items 10, 11, 12, 13, 15, and then finish with items 6, 7, 8, 9, and 14.
Could I could I also add in something, Commissioner Miller, on this discussion? I do recall actually that we did tell as an applicant, but we told our special guest speaker for the agenda item six and seven that that would be first, and that that's the reason I put that one first also because since it's actually been from our pulled from our May meeting agenda as well.
Commissioner Miller has a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Batty? Commissioner Batty has seconded. For point of clarification, Commissioner Miller, you did not mention item number five, 16 or 17. May I assume that those were in the same order that they currently are?
Yes, I'd be correct.
Is there further discussion by commissioners? Commissioner Brink?
Sorry, my connection dropped, so I did not hear the motion.
The the motion currently on the table is for the remaining of the agenda to move from five to 10, 11, 12, 13, 15, 6, 7, 8, 9, 14, 16, 17. It essentially is moving those items with public hearings to the end prior to other business.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Noting on Donovan Hart's comment, there is, there is staff and I believe somebody from the county to present for the 123 property. I'm gonna make a motion that we move items six and seven between five and 10, which effectively puts it back where it is and retains the rest of the intent of your motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Young?
Mr. Chair, you have a motion on the table.
Right.
And and unless you are moving an amendment to the motion.
That is what I did.
Pardon me?
That was my motion was to amend by moving items six and seven, retaining the rest of his motion.
And so you are now asking for a second and a vote on the amendment?
Correct.
Second?
There's there's a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, Karen, can you please take a roll call vote on the amendment? For clarity, the amendment is just moving six and seven as staff requested back to the beginning. Karen, you're on mute.
Okay, so I have Commissioner Young.
Yo, yes.
Commissioner Batty.
Hi.
Commissioner Miller.
Hi.
Commissioner Keen. Commissioner Brink.
Hi.
Chair Langness.
Hi, motion carries. We're back to the original motion. Is there further discussion on the original motion as amended? Seeing none. For clarity, the original motion at this point as amended would go five, six, seven, 10, 11, 12, 13, 15, eight, nine, 14, 16, 17. Seeing no other discussion. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Commissioner Batty.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Keen. Commissioner Keen. Commissioner Brink. Chair Langness.
Hi, motion carries. Dan or Karen, would one of you two be able to please call Commissioner Keen's phone and see if he has some technical issues that we can help him get on online with us? We are now at item number five, approving the planning commission meeting minutes from July 22nd. Is there a motion? Commissioner Batty?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Brink, seconds. Is there discussion on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, Karen, can you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Commissioner Batty.
Hi.
Commissioner Miller.
Epstein.
Commissioner Keen. Commissioner Brink.
Hi.
Chair Langness.
Hi, motion carries. We're on item number six, the comprehensive plan amendment application for Headwaters 123 property, PID 29.032.21.23.0002 and 29.032.21.24.0001. Donovan, are you starting this presentation?
Yeah, I'd like to provide a little preamble and then like to turn over to Mr. Peterson, who is the broker for the property at Headwaters 123.
Perfect, thank you.
I'd like to present the chair members of Plan Commission, like to present the the conference of plan amendment and zoning map amendment applications for the Headwaters 123 property. This, of course, has been the subject of several planning commission meetings and even a joint EDA Plan Commission and City Council meeting to discuss the economic development plans for this project. And I won't I'm sorry. Okay, I won't summarize the, you know, all the the points we've made. I do want to add into one thing. Share my screen. This was not in the packet. This relates to material that Chris Eng from the CDA presented related to just where the city is as far as percentage of market values. They are commercial industrial within the city's tax base. And it's basically in the in the Washington County is about 10.7%, which is about half of Pennington County, and it's below the statewide average. And the effort here is to, you know, gain more commercial tax base within the city. As well as another piece that I found informative was this table that he presented that relates to cost of services for every $1 of property tax received, where there's quite an imbalance between the cost of service, the commercial industrial property is about 29 cents for every dollar of tax received versus $1.16 expended to maintain that residential with all the services that entails. And at that point, I like to also, just as a comment I had from discussion from that July 20th workshop, and it seems that there's you know, some some opinion that it would be easy to change the zoning later if we did receive a the city did receive a proposal for some business technology development that would then require, you know, all of the 123 acres. I only need to point to what we see now where this is, I believe, is the fifth meeting we've talked about to get this rezoning done. So it is can be an obstacle for rezoning. And so with that, I'd like to turn over to Dan Peterson, who is our expert in the field of marking this property for the tech corridor. Dan, take it away.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Thumbs up, everyone can hear me? All right, I'm going to try to share a screen here as well, so just bear with me if I, while I click over. All right. As a refresher for everyone, my name's Dan Peterson. I'm with CBRE, and I'm the data center solutions representative for the Upper Midwest. Been asked to come out on the Zoom tonight and talk a little bit about the current state of the data center market, how the pandemic is affecting some of those aspects of the market, provide you with some statistics, talk about our site, and then certainly answer any questions. First, there's some context for you. It certainly is with, it goes without saying that it's been kind of an unprecedented time for a number of aspects of our economy and our market, but throughout this whole pandemic, data center demand has continued to be consistent, if not increase. As you may be familiar with, the increase of online needs for business and schools and entertainment has driven actually about a 30% surge in network traffic on the internet. What it's also done is it's accelerated a business trend that we see, which is one of which companies are now taking a lot of what was historically their on-premises data center and blending that across a portfolio of different types of data centers. Certainly, they're on premises, the colocation facilities, and cloud data center services as an answer to make a mix of what they need. This approach is becoming more common, and and they adapted to what happened from everybody working at home and then also as they see what their needs are going forward. Since the onset of COVID, remote working has only amplified these trends, and on-demand cloud services and colocation data centers have, can be continued to see an increase as a result. Going forward, the demand for cloud services is expected to accelerate and in turn, the investors and the investment in building capacity for these types of data centers and and services provided by hyperscale providers like AWS and Microsoft and Google to meet that demand is expected to do the same. This certainly means more data center service provider expansions, data center development, excuse me, and investor interest in data centers. As a bit of context, for example, projects just announced in the United States in the last two months to give you some feel for it, Facebook recently announced an $800 million data center development in Gallatin, Tennessee. And that was within 30 days of when they announced another $800 million data center development in DeKalb, Illinois, excuse me, DeKalb, Illinois. That last one is going to be bringing about 100 jobs once it's built. Those aren't construction jobs, those are full-time jobs once that 900,000 square foot data center or so is built in Illinois. Amazon is expanding 2.5 million square feet in Northern Virginia. A service provider, Vantage, actually is investing about 1.2 billion in site expansions. And really, the excuse me, the I want to click here, the 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 future demand or perceived future demand and the current need that was an uptick of the pandemic has also benefited the data center REITs. If you kind of take a look at this slide here, you'll see on the left
Dan, Dan?
Yeah.
Yeah, your screen share is actually not showing on our screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's get that. Here, I've been talking. How's that?
We can see it now. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, all right. Now, the first slide was nothing but less time with my pretty face, so I apologize for that. So you see that data center REITs have actually performed as one of the strongest asset classes in commercial real estate. But from a REIT portfolio perspective, if you're familiar with at all with the types of companies that we're talking about, it's Digital Realty, QTS, Aquanex, Cyrus One, and CoreSite. They've actually outperformed most asset classes almost 19% year-to-date, actually. So because of this, they're raising a lot more capital, and three of these REITs alone raised 8.3 billion in June, which helped fuel things like Digital Realty is is actually a wholesale service provider that is not just announced last week, another 7.5 million square feet expansion in Northern Virginia. So from a land perspective, current hyperscale data center requirements is driving up prices in places like Toronto. It's certainly supporting extremely high prices in places like Northern Virginia or Silicon Valley. There is some trickle effect to that, to the in-between places that we're talking about. But really, it is supporting a larger expansion of data center that really doesn't see a lot of end at this point for these established markets and then all the points in between, because the charts in the middle of that slide are really telling a different story that was underway even before the pandemic, which is there's evolving technologies such as IoT or even automated vehicles, which we know is a bit down the road, but planning and infrastructure support network and even computing at the edge for our streaming services is all driving data center development across the country and across the world. So tracking it from a statistical standpoint, preliminary numbers for our second quarter this year will be an absorption of about 200 megawatts. And and we can, I can answer questions on how, what that really means in terms of square footage and development, but it's a lot. But more importantly, how you compare it to last quarter, which was only about 60 megawatts of absorption. These things take time to build, but there's a real speed to market issue going on, not only because of the pandemic, but also because of the technology adoption I mentioned. So how, what does that mean for us here? Local development, we've seen some things happen recently. One service provider that already has two sites in this market is just broke ground in Brooklyn Center on another nine megawatt facility. And so that's a good indicator to us that we see to expect more needs from local enterprise. Like I said before, with the on-premises data center folks that are moving stuff into the COO or the cloud, and then also the incoming cloud service providers that are helping spin up services to companies and schools and health services and everybody in in between. So as context about the market, the the next thing I would talk about is specifically about our site. And we too have seen a spike in activity in the last 90 days as far as interest in looking at the site and really what our our job many times has been to provide as much information in as easy a fashion and make that as frictionless process as possible. And so we've seen this spike from a lot of regional users, but a lot of national interest as well, California, Illinois, Michigan, Wisconsin, Colorado, Kansas, Arizona. These are all places of origin for companies that are looking at this site. They may be going to the Headwaters Tech Park, like you see the URL there, and you can go to that website. Or they're seeing it through our campaign. CB sends out every three weeks to a national data center industry. That's brokers, developers, end users, a lot of people all in that spectrum, and then the local brokerage community, a reminder and a promotion to sending them to the site and sending information. We even have one project that our, one of our larger Echo Dev groups has put us into site selection consideration for. While there's nothing conclusive, and the pandemic did kind of delay some timelines on decision-making, we know Minnesota is still in the mix, and and we're one of the sites that's in that mix for consideration. So we we're confident that we're seeing national interest. And as it bubbles up to becoming something that will allow us to realize a campus or an end user or one of these projects, I think it's just a matter of time as the data center trends evolve and kind of permeate multiple markets. So you know, the other thing I would bring is context to this beyond data center and the technical use is the other types of uses that we are seeing come to the site, request information, health services, auto, storage, education, these are all other types of users that are looking at this for a commercial application or a commercial development. Data centers certainly next to industrial are the two strongest categories in commercial real estate right now from a development perspective or even a needs perspective from a, from the economy standpoint. Data center for the reasons we discussed and industrial for reasons such as cold storage, tech-driven logistics and distribution and e-commerce. You see a very strong development cycle of that happening nationally. So really, having the acceptable zoning in place for us helps expedite the qualification of any of the types of these projects and hopefully gives us a competitive advantage over other greenfield and brownfield sites. You know, we continue to talk with reps of service providers, construction folks and development firms that specialize in the space, in the space. You know, and they're looking for incentives, renewable and robust power, ease of use, time to qualify, and and really some of the things that you're doing now, which is kind of preparing, hopefully preparing the area, the 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 table for them to come in and be able to expedite some some sound decision-making and hopefully negotiating. As a geographic context to this, before I kind of stop talking for a minute and see what people may have for questions, there's another kind of, from a development perspective, that we'll see as some triggers that hopefully we'll see around in this market. Is these larger hyperscale or cloud, hyperscale cloud providers come in and establish a footprint? We really see an echo effect or a clustering of other kinds of service providers. Now, in this market, we saw a lot of third-party service providers, data center service providers come into this market, build because there was a scarcity of that to help support the Fortune 5 enterprise user that really didn't have that offering in this market. And we still see opportunity to serve both those, those, those customers in that way. But as the cloud matures, as the needs become more prevalent, as those providers start to deploy across the US, then we see the service providers work in the shadows of that, and so there'll be more data center development to come. So that makes us bullish about, you know, our region, the attributes of this site, and certainly sticking to our knitting on a regular day-to-day basis with the Fortune 5 enterprise folks, they want the same robust, redundant and secureable sites as as the service providers, but they're probably looking for a little closer proximity to whether it's their other production data center or maybe their HQ. So all that said, it's, in some ways, it's business as usual in light of the pandemic, but it can always, it can always be better, and it can always be better with us getting more traction, certainly on this site. But I'll pause there and see if there was questions from commissioners or or others.
Commissioners? Commissioner Miller?
Dan, you had mentioned some of the uses for the property. You know, we're being asked to look at changing our zoning text to Business Park. And what were the uses? You said that you see the the majority being sought for in spaces like this. You mentioned data centers, cold storage, and a few others.
Yeah, I mean, we look at who the company is and make a, and surmise what the use might be, but we've seen health services, we've seen automotive, we've seen storage, we've seen education, all along with data center. I mean, these are all kinds of uses that are talking about, are looking probably for a larger site for a commercial facility of some kind. Now, what, because that's the category that they work in, from an industry standpoint, we don't know exactly what the use is until they step forward, whether they request information or not.
Go ahead, Commissioner Miller.
And my second question then, Dan, is let's just say we're thinking about this for data center use. What's the biggest data center building you've seen built? And how many acres does it take?
Well, they, I see that a lot of these hyperscalers like to work in these large chunks because they like to control their destiny. So someone like Facebook will take down 200, 400 acres at a pop if they see fit. That doesn't mean they don't build on 123 acres, but the more the wholesale folks probably are a bit smaller, but they still too want to go into, you know, 20, 30, 40, 60 acre increments.
Continue, Commissioner Miller. You have the floor.
One last question. The data center that you mentioned, I think you mentioned just went into Brooklyn Center. How many acres was that built on?
We believe that's about 20-some acres. Now, that's a third site for these folks. So what they're trying to get is some geographic dispersment in in submarkets from Minneapolis. So they already have I would say probably another 15 or so in this market.
Thank you.
Questions from other commissioners? Commissioner Brink.
Dan, I was just wondering if you could stop sharing your screen, please.
Oh, sure.
Thank you very much. Perfect.
How's that? All right.
Thank you.
Other questions from commissioners? Did that conclude your presentation, Dan?
Yeah, I, it really did. I mean, I wanted to leave enough time or ability to kind of take it to where the commissioners may want to take it based on, you know, what I was asked to discuss tonight. I mean, I know I was a lot there and hopefully it was applicable to the discussion on, on the task at hand.
I appreciate your presentation. Donovan, did you have anything additional?
No, it's just that, you know, is, is staff recommendation for the comp plan amendment to change the future land use category of this headwaters 123 property from mixed use and low, medium density residential to business park. And then with the zoning map amendment, change it from N X R one mixed residential, single family and townhouse district with planned unit development overlay to BP business park. And that is for items, agenda items six and seven.
So commissioners, we're on item number six. Is there a motion or discussion? I think I see Commissioner Young trying to, Commissioner Young.
Yeah, my screen is really small. Chair Langness, I am going to move that the planning commission recommend approval to the city council of the comp plan amendment to amend the 2040 comp plan future use plan to change the future land use categories of the headwaters 123 property from mixed use and low, medium density residential to business park future land use category. This, we have a huge significant amount of residential property that is still developable. I think that this would be a very good use for this particular piece of property. And it would fit in with what we would like to do along the highway 61 corridor south of, between, between Forest Lake and Yucca. Thank you.
Commissioner Young has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Brink seconded for discussion. Commissioner Miller, I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, I'm torn. I'll be really honest with you. I'm torn on this. I, I believe, you know, we obviously need, you know, some business park land. Do we need 123 acres of it? You know, I don't know. Is it prudent to keep some of it for residential? I don't know that either. I, I'm just, I'm torn because that land has been sitting there a long time. And I understand what Dan was presenting. You know, I, I think, you know, there's hopes and dreams that we're going to get something like that in Forest Lake and that we'll be able to develop that land. But I, I, I just don't, I just don't see it happening and I hate to see us change something. And like Donovan mentioned earlier, how hard it will be to change it back if it doesn't work out over the next, how many years do we wait to see if it's going to happen? So yeah, I'm just torn on it. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Young.
We have a very significant amount of residential land that is available for development. A significant amount that is available in the headwaters that has not been developed yet. I realize that it's, it's tough to bet on the come, but this is one area that when the previous council put together the, the 2040 comp plan, they significantly prized this type of zoning process and, or pardon me, this, this, this type of land use and felt that a significantly greater amount was needed in Forest Lake. When we look at our, our spreadsheets on amount of business property or, or industrial development property compared to the amount of residential property that we have that is developable. There is a very, very significant amount of residential and I think that this is enough of a, a coming opportunity for us that I'm willing to give it three years to try and mature.
Comments from other commissioners? Commissioner Miller?
And Commissioner Young, I a hundred percent agree that we have, you know, single family sites that are, that are able to develop. I'm not sure how many of them have everything right there already available to them like this particular project does. My concern and my, my, where my, where my concern comes in is when I ask the question about what else are they looking at potentially putting in this business park area? Let's say we have a, a, you know, a tech center come in there and they use 25 acres. And then all of a sudden now we have three or four car places that want to come in or a bunch of cold storage places that want to come in. You know, that's where my anxiety comes from is do we really want that area to develop like that? That's my only concern.
Commissioner Young.
The entire headwaters development, that, that entire headwaters area has full water sewer and storm sewer ready to go. So the, the entire area between Fenway and 61 and this property to the, to the airport essentially has roads, water, sewer, stormwater. I think that much of the, the cable at center was also put in. I'm not sure of that, but it is, it is ready to go as we saw with how quickly the apartments have gone up. So there is, there is property that is, that is ready to go and I would love to have a housing developer come in and, and, and take on the rest of that single family and townhouse zone property that is just sitting there growing weeds.
Other comments from commissioners?
My, my comment is, I, I know the joint meeting we had with city council and E D A on this project. One of the moving things for me there was one of the very first slides talked about the, the cost versus tax paid by a business or commercial property versus that of a residential. And I want to say it was about a quarter on the dollar for a business property and it was like a dollar 25 or so on a single family residential. And I think people oftentimes don't realize that when we have an opportunity to have business or commercial, particularly something is relatively clean as a data center type of business. We have lower taxes for our residents, which I think is one of the things that's heavily embraced in this community. The, the property has, you know, but essentially been for sale for a developer for a long time. And we have yet to receive a development proposal or purchase proposal from a developer that council has found reasonable. And I, I think council, you know, has made significant connections with the county and, and put significant investment in this. I, I'm with Susan, except I, I'd probably go a little more than three years. You know, I, I think sometimes these, these types of projects, which would be amazing here can take a long time. And I do believe that if it doesn't work, which is entirely a possibility that I grant. I think it's a lot easier to move this thing back to residential than it is to move it into the zoning we're moving it into now. So other comments from commissioners? Seeing that we have a motion. In a second, Karen, I'm looking for you. Can you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty? Commissioner Batty?
Yep, aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Langness?
Aye. Motion carries. We're on item number seven, the zoning map amendment application for the same two headwaters 123 property. Donovan, did you have anything to add on this specific item?
No, I just, I appreciate Commissioner, Commissioner Young recognizing this is a planning commission recommendation to council for this application.
Thank you. Commissioner Young?
In for a lamb, in for a sheep. I moved that the planning commission adopted findings of fact and recommends city council approval of the zoning map amendment to change the zoning district of the headwaters 123 property from N X R one mixed residential to BP business park contingent on the adoption of the comp plan amendment by the council designating the property as a business park in the 2040 future land use plan.
There's a motion. Is there a second? I'll second. Discussion? Seeing no discussion. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Langness?
Aye. Motion carries. We are now moving to the next agenda. Oh, I, I want to say, hey, Dan Peterson, thank you for joining us tonight. You're certainly welcome. I believe that was the last piece of, of your item.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Have a pleasant evening.
Thank you. We're now moving on to what was originally agenda item number 10, the site plan review application for 432 North Shore Trail. Otherwise known as Coffey Smith. Donovan, were you going to kick us off with the presentation?
Certainly. Chair and members of the planning commission like to present the site plan review for 432 North Shore Drive, which is the conversion of an existing single family home to a coffee shop on the first floor. And this is within the mixed use to general mixed use zoning district. I'd like to locate these property for you. It's on the north end of our established downtown. And right that intersection of North Shore Drive and Highway 61 with a small, kind of small access road here on the west side. What is proposed is essentially retaining the, 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 the building within its current footprint. And this is formerly known as the Cool House and I'm sure Commissioner Brink could give us a dissertation on its history. And which Mr. Whoel owned it back in the day. But given our time constraints, let's move on to the, what they're proposing is a parking lot to make it usable for coffee, coffee customers. Access is from North Shore Drive, a single access point. And this is far enough away from that North, you know, Fourth Avenue kind of Highway 61 intersection. And there's a stormwater pond on this southwest corner. And, you know, access through the existing front door. Parking supply does meet the needs for the maximum size of staff there, including one handicapped accessible spot. One light pole is proposed, meeting code requirements for maximum height of the pole and no lights, no excessive light spill over according to the submitted photometric plan. The city is requiring the, that the, as a condition of approval, that this existing sidewalk be expanded to six foot wide and also this access be removed to not encourage any kind of crossing across North Shore Drive instead where the, where there is a, the end of this actual, you know, crosswalk painted. And then the, the city will take up, you know, further expansion of sidewalk facilities in the future. But this would be a part of the, the current ADA plan that the city has adopted. The landscaping plan does meet city landscaping requirements for, for perimeter trees. And there's existing screening on that east side. And I'll show you the landscaping plan here, which shows, you know, where those existing bushes are. Some removed for the, for the driveway and then, you know, spruce trees planted as well as existing maples and spruce trees on the site. And this project has received, received watershed approval for their cap rock. And the, the engineering review didn't, didn't reveal any, anything that was substantial as far as obstacles for the construction. And the, there's a small monument sign on that southwest corner of the property that is proposed. And the existing trash enclosure will be with inside existing detached garage. And staff recommendation is for a planning commission approval with six conditions that relate to meeting city engineer requirements, team building permits, the Comfort Lake, Forest Lake watershed district permitting to be obtained, improvement agreement, the monument sign, meaning the material standards for commercial signs. And all city required financials have been submitted prior to initiation of construction activities. With that, I'd like to take any questions from the planning commission.
Commissioners, Miller, Mr. Miller.
Donovan, I have just one question. I'm looking at the survey and I see where the parking lot is going to have the access on North Shore. Has there been any consideration that the blocking off or, or closing off the road on, on the Fifth Avenue that, that comes in the Fourth Avenue Northwest, which is adjoining North Shore Drive? You know, that, that corner gets so backed up with traffic and if you have that stop sign there, plus you have the, you have a stop sign on 50, you have a stop sign on fourth and trying to cross 61. It looks like most of the traffic's going to be diverted down to that North Shore Drive. Is that why we haven't looked at closing off that road?
Well, I believe actually it's in MinDOT right of way. We had some discussion with MinDOT and the city engineer. I'm not sure where exactly that landed. And, you know, the, you know, I believe that any, I mean, are you mostly concerned that people coming in will try to use that local access for access to the park?
Yeah, it looks to me, it looks to me unless they're, you know, changing the whole landscaping on the, I guess it'd be the west side of the, the home, you know, where the driveway is now. And, you know, I know now people pull in there and park in that driveway and they park on, they park on fifth. And so I guess is that what's the plan is, is to kind of take that driveway out of there and, and landscape that? So the traffic is more diverted to North Shore?
Well, I think that just, I mean, kind of, we have not proposed that and the site plan does not show any closing off of, you know, that private driveway. And I believe that's not necessary because of, I mean, it still be, is, is used for the, you know, the property to the north. And for the, you know, the Whispering Pines apartment building. I think a lot of that, in some ways, your concern is the reason why we're not concerned is that it's really tough to do that left turn there because there often is waiting traffic. And so I think any, any customers are going to find the parking lot much more convenient to go into. I, I can expect some parking along North Shore Drive, you know, adjacent to the property as the quick in and out for, for coffee customers. But we have that, at this point, we have not proposed any, any closing there.
Thank you.
Other questions on the staff report? See, seen none. Calvin Waddle, if you want to unmute yourself, we certainly will welcome any additional presentation you'd like to provide us. Concise tonight is awesome. And then we'll open it up for questions from commissioners to you as well.
I'm having a really hard time here and I think I'm breaking up pretty bad.
We can hear you fine.
You can hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have anything to present as far as the, anything that Donovan hasn't discussed yet. However, I would be really excited to get approval on the parking lot. However, I would be really excited to get approval on the parking lot. I think that the, the space is going to be used, um, in such a, a great way. That's going to benefit the community and the, the positive reaction we've seen from the community so far, um, just with the coffee trailer and seeing people, you know, walk, walk down from the lake and walk from Mallards and stuff and use this space on what I plan to intend to, intend to use it for as a kind of a community gathering space has been cool. For me to see, and I've really enjoyed it so far.
Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Young?
Mr. Waddle, have you reviewed the requirements of the city engineer and do you foresee any problems meeting those requirements?
We have reviewed the requirements from the city engineer. As far as foreseeing any problems with it, I don't see any, I think we would, we would ask to not have, or to have the requirement of sidewalk be, uh, being expanded reconsidered. But that would be about the only one of we've seen from their requirements.
Are there questions of the applicant? Commissioner Batty?
Um, Donovan, when you did your presentation, I, I don't know if you were aware of it, but all we saw was the very first thing you put up there. We didn't see you go from any other plans. So when you were talking about the sidewalk, we, there was, there, we didn't, we didn't see a thing. And I'm, I'm just, I, I've got the luxury of having a second large monitor computer here, so I can, uh, I can pull it up separately and look at it, but, uh, I'm, I'm not understanding this, the sidewalk issue. And it just, it seems a little, you know, the, the, the applicant talked about people walking from, um, Mallards down here to get coffee and then objecting to, uh, putting in additional sidewalk and I, but I, I guess I first want to understand, uh, where the additional sidewalk is going because I don't, I don't see it shown here. I, I mean, I see the existing sidewalk shown on the survey. I don't see a plan here that shows additional sidewalk.
No, it's not, it's, it's not, it's a, it's a city requirement in this case.
So where, where is it going to go?
It's, it's basically the replacement of, it's about a four-foot side sidewalk. Can you see my screen now?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's, you know, I go to the other site. Sorry. It's this existing kind of, you know, gravel looking, um, walkway. And, um, to meet, you know, ADA standards, you know, having a ramp at the, at the, at the, at the southern terminus there. And then being six feet wide. And of course with, you know, going across, you know, where the, where the driveway is, you know, meets to, to meet eight, current ADA standards.
I, so I, I have a follow-up here, and that is, um, you know, I drive by this site very often and I had heard early on that there was a coffee place going in, so I, you know, knew that sooner or later this was coming down the pike here, but I, uh, I, and I, you know, you know, there's a lot of, um, a lot of very mature trees along, uh, North Shore Drive there, and I know some of them have already been taken out. We apparently don't have any kind of a tree ordinance when it comes to taking out mature trees and replacing them or, or, or that sort of thing. And this is probably not the time I should have asked about that, you know, before we got to this point right here. But my concern is if, if that fairly heavily wooded area just to the, uh, southwest, you know, the southwest edge of the parking lot, if, if all, if there, if those trees are still in there and that's going to remain that solid mass of, of vegetation that it is right there. You're not going to have very good sightlines coming out of that, uh, that driveway onto North Shore there. And it's right, you know, we're, we're right on a curve. I'm, I'm just curious if there was any thought to pushing that that driveway further to the, uh, it would be the southeast, I guess.
No, we basically, you know, initial, there was initial proposal to have the driveway come from the, the west. We realized that that was not going to work with just how much capacity that little frontage road has and, and just the sheer you, uh, congestion at that intersection that
Yeah.
Obviously Commissioner Miller mentioned, um, you know, looking again at the, you know, at the site plan, we can see that, you know, essentially, you know, where the, you know, they've retained the existing walkway and just tucked in the, in the driveway here. I'm understanding your concern, but a vehicle coming out will have somewhat all of its, you know, it'll have, you know, pretty full visibility, um, you know, around, around this corner by time it's reaching the, the curb area. And I, and, you know, I don't really see an alternative to the existing access point.
Commissioner Keen, I believe you had your hand up next. Mr. Keen, you're in mute. We can hear you now. Yep.
Yeah, my, my only concern there is, uh, is the way they're kind of running it now. I know that's why they want the parking lot to, uh, to expand the parking. But whoever's doing the lawn care there, I drive by there three, four times a week. And I watch them mow the grass right out into the street and it just sits out in the street and then it goes right into the lake. Now they're right, they're right across the street from the lake. And, uh, I know that's not on our subject today, but that's all I've got for the homeowners, uh, if they could be a little more diligent in their, uh, lawn care. For, for our lake.
Commissioner Young?
Um, two things. One, I believe that, um, blowing lawn clippings into the street is against city ordinance because of our lake and, and because of the water quality concerns. Uh, and second, um, the sidewalk has, has to be improved there. One of the problems with our downtown as it is, is that our sidewalks are too narrow along Lake Street. And I do expect that the applicant will have folks coming in, um, from either the funeral home or, or from Mallards or from areas down along Lake and having a sufficient sidewalk so that somebody could, for instance, push a stroller and have a kid at hand next to them. And have sufficient room on the sidewalk is absolutely critical. If you are going to be encouraging people to walk from the rest of the community to your establishment. So that, that sidewalk is very, very important. In fact, I wish that the city engineer had required it to be wider.
Commissioners, Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, and again, I, Mr. Waddle, I think it's, uh, it's great. I think you're going to get a lot of community support. And I just want to confirm, uh, Mr. Waddle or Donovan. I don't see anything on any of these maps that show that it's a solid surface driveway. Is that driveway going to, is that parking lot going to be, is going to be paved or is it going to be dirt?
It's, no, there is a note, it is proposed by two minutes parking lot, so it's, it's with asphalt.
Other questions of the applicant commissioners? All right, Kelvin, thank you for, um, answering those. Uh, hang on, we're going to bring it back to our discussion. Sometimes we do have additional questions in that discussion. Commissioners, is there a motion on this agenda item? Commissioner Miller?
I would make a motion to approve, uh, the, uh, the request as, as it's written with the, uh, with the six conditions that staff has, uh, put on, uh, for the approval.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Keen is seconded at discussion. Commissioner Batty?
I'm still not understanding what additional sidewalk you're proposing, Donovan.
It's, it's, it's primarily a replacement of the existing four-foot side sidewalk.
So you're just, all that's, that's all you're asking is that they just replace the existing sidewalk with sidewalk that meets the, the current, uh, city ordinances?
Right, ADA standards as well as
We're not going to, we're not going to carry it around the corner there. It, 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 it still doesn't make sense. The site plan doesn't make sense. I'm sorry. I, I want to see this thing go, but almost no thought at all has been given. I mean, the owner, uh, said they, they expect traffic to come from downtown. How are they going to get there? There's no place for them to get, you know, you're going to have to walk across streets and that sort of thing. And that's a, I, I, that's, I go through that intersection as, as often as any in town and I, it's, it's busy, you know, and I, I think there needs to be some kind of, um, recognition given to that. So it makes it, so you're not creating a situation that's, that's unsafe for people to get there.
Discussion on other, from other commissioners? Seen none. Um, I, I looked at this project. Um, Commissioner Batty, I, I, I think if the sidewalk went completely around the thing, I would say that's going too far.
And that's not what I'm saying.
Yep. The replacement of that sidewalk there, the, the sidewalk is in pretty rough shape. If I remember right, the landscaping kind of goes right over the top a half of it. You could barely walk through the thing if you wanted to at this point. And I think as they redevelop this, that sidewalk will actually really improve the wraparound on that particular parcel. I wish that we could extend needs when development comes that has impacts elsewhere, but the simple fact is we know we can't do that. And, you know, I, I think when this development goes in, um, I, I think, you know, putting a, a better designed crosswalk at Fourth or North Shore, whatever it's called there, um, would be wise. Um, and then people are able to walk into town, at least on the east side of the road. So I guess I'm a little, I, I'm not as concerned there, but I don't want at the same time to, you know, remove the sidewalk from the application. I think this is a great interim use, uh, or, or a great use without completely demolishing the, the historic house there. For this particular type of business. So I'm, I'm in support of the staff recommendations tonight. Commissioner Young?
Commissioner Batty, it will not surprise me if, um, if these folks don't come back at a later date for something additional at this property, either a, a change in use or addition of bed and breakfast or, or something like that. And, and if so, then I think at that time it will make good sense to us to require the additional work.
Other discussion from commissioners? All right, Karen, we have, um, if you can take a roll call vote, we have the motion on the table to approve as staff recommended with the six outlined conditions.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Langness?
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, Kelvin, I, I look forward to a, a day Justin and I can go over there and he can tell me all sorts of history about your new coffee shop. Good luck. We are on item number eleven, site plan review application, three eighty Broadway Avenue West. The South Shore Veterinary Hospital Expansion Proposal. Donovan, are you going to kick us off on the discussion here?
Certainly. I'd like to present the site plan review for the South Shore Vet. This is an expansion of existing building with additional, uh, parking. The, um, I'd like to share my screen, show you the, the, uh, the, the property located at three eighty Broadway Avenue, which is just a, a few blocks west of the Broadway Roundabout. So it's existing business has been there for a number of years. Uh, maybe we'll learn how many. I didn't ask that question of the applicant. And, um, this, what, and so what's expand, uh, what's existing here is this is the Broadway Business Commercial District Zone Properties for all three of them. Is these existing house on the, on the south, um, side. And what they're proposing is, um, this addition on the, on the east side as well as the south side. Square, square footage for additional, uh, facilities to serve their veterinary patients. Um, and, and the submitted plans show, um, how these, you know, some of the demolition, but then how there'll be, um, additional, this parking lot um, with a new access from Fourth Street Southwest, um, coming into here as well as a stormwater pond. To treat the stormwater from that addition. Um, there is some, um, some restriping here of the parking lot. Let me get down next, um, this next plant.
Donovan, I, I think you're trying to show us something and it's not moving.
Yeah, for some reason I'm, okay, so I'm sorry, it's, it's mean to technology. I thought by, um, you know, since I had the screen, I will. I thought I could just simply pop from one thing and next. Not happening. Um, so sorry, let me, let me kind of back up here a little bit then. So the, um, the expansion here is on the, shown on the, um, in the additions in bold here that's on the east side and south side. With a new place for, uh, um, a dumpster corral. And this parking on the south with a new access point from, um, from Fourth Street Southwest. And so here's some elevations of the building from the, this showing that, that expansion on the, the east side as well as, um, this is, you know, expansion on the east side, but then this is again, in that same, same view from different elevation. And then also we can look, um, on the, the west, um, exterior elevation. And the reason I bring these up is one of the staff recommendations is that there, there be, um, some more, um, the architectural detail added to the public frontage. So there's not a plain, um, such a, a plain, um, addition there. I understand that those are, at least the x-ray room and other rooms that don't allow for windows. But I believe there's several things to, um, meet those minimum design standards. But the, uh, coming back to the site plan, um, there is the stormwater facility proposed for the, um, southern part of the property. And, um, part of this is, um, it's also to provide the adequate landscape screening, um, on that south side, which the, you know, the landscape plan shows, you know, combination of trees and bushes to accomplish that as well as additional foundation plantings, um, around the site. I mentioned there was a little bit of some restriping here. Um, the, the, uh, the South Shore Vet owner recently, um, acquired about twenty-five feet, um, from the adjoining bank to be, allow for this expansion and allow for adequate, um, parking for the site. And the the, uh, parking that does, um, meet standards as well as the, uh, landscaping plan as well as the trash enclosure. Um, no exterior lights, um, are, are proposed. They're new. Uh, no, no new sign proposed. And, um, this project is, is expected to be reviewed at the Comfort Lake Forest, like watershed, um, district board meeting on August twenty-seventh for, for their review. And so this being a site plan review, um, staff does recommend planning commission approval of the South Shore Vet Hospital, Hospital, um, building expansion with the company insight improvements. With seven conditions, um, that relate to Comfort Lake Forest, like watershed district permitting, city engineer concerns being addressed. Now, building permits being obtained, the project meeting, the minimum design standards. And, uh, that all, all the project parcels be consolidated into one parcel. And, and then the required financials and development agreement being And, and then the required financials and development agreement being executed. With that, I'm happy to take in questions from the planning commission.
Are there questions from commissioners on the staff? Commissioner Betty? Commissioner Betty, you're in mute. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, I was curious about this landscape plan. Is, I mean, it looks nice, all color, all those colored trees and shrubs and stuff like that. Is that all, is everything that's colored on there, is that new Donovan, or is that showing both new and existing?
It, it's my understanding that's definitely new on that south side, you know, by the Stormwater Pond. And I believe that's, you know, all, you know, it's a total of 20 overstory trees, 93 understory trees or shrubs. And, you know, the, 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 the project architect, Steve Aria can, can educate us, but I believe that those are new or, or replacements.
All that, all the green trees and shrubs around the, proposed around the building are all new then? Is that, that's what you're saying?
Let me, let me jump in. This is Steve Iaria with Koma Architects. I don't know if you can pull that plan up Donovan, but I guess what you're seeing is a combination of, of new and existing. Because along the north side, there, you know, basically there's going to be some modifications that need to be made with underground work, utility work that will probably displace mainly on the north east corner of the building. So there's going to be some underground utilities that need to be run, which will take out landscaping and will be put back to kind of meet this same look. But then along the north, basically all along the north, where the existing building is, it's, it's going to remain as is, but then we have a part of that sort of east addition that faces north that will be a continuation of, of what's there and then wrap basically around the corner on the east side to where that exists or where the addition is situated. So it, it's basically a depiction of what will be ground cover or found, I guess we call it foundation plantings around the building. I think there was just so much going on that we just made it all, all one. You know, we, we colored it all, so it, it highlighted what the landscaping was going to be on the perimeter.
Well, what was confusing was that there are some trees and shrubs on there that aren't colored. You know, that's, so that's what I, that's why I was asking. The other thing I'm wondering about is, is it looks like you've got shrubs and stuff. I, I can't, I didn't pull it up and look at it in detail, but that, the south half of that stormwater retention pond, I mean, it looks like it has trees and shrubs that are right in it. Is that, can you explain what's going on there?
I think the idea was to provide some level of screening to the parking, but we can't really justify doing overstory plantings based on the type of, of retention area. It just will not promote growth. So our landscape architect, who's not on the call right now, could probably do a better job than I am with the species that he selected, but you know, the idea obviously is to meet some of these requirements with screening and, and, you know, filling out a landscape plan to the best we can.
Commissioners, are there other questions on the staff report? Seen none. Um, Steve Iara or Joe, and I apologize if I mispronounce your last name, Vis Lysel. If you have any presentation or anything additional to the staff report that you want to let us know about now, we'll give you opportunity to, to present that as well.
Yeah, I guess appreciate all the help Donovan to get us to where we are. I think the, the review and the comments that we got, you know, seem doable. I think there's probably a little bit of conversation we still need based on a couple of the, the engineers' comments. We do have our application in with the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed and you know, are appreciative of, of all the, the work you guys have helped us, helped us out with. So Joe, I don't know if you want to maybe give a little quick show on the business?
Yeah, yeah, I do. And thanks for having us tonight, guys. I'm Joe Vis Lysel. And sorry for my noisy entrance with my two young children earlier. I apologize for that. But yes, we're glad to be able to expand our business. It's been there for quite some time. I, I cannot tell you the exact date. However, we're proud to be part of the community and growing. So we'll be very pleased to build this business. I'm getting a word from my partner, 1977. So if that was important to folks. Anyway, nothing else aside from what Steve said. We're just ready to keep growing.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Seen none. Commissioner Young? Commissioner Young, you're on mute.
There. Sorry, I'm, I'm, I am also trying to deal with, with two screens and that means two mouses. Donovan, they are moving the driveway farther south from Broadway, correct?
They'll, they'll retain that, that northern access point on, on Broadway. So they'll, they are doing a new entrance south of the, of the expansion.
Because I, this is, is my home vet. And for my small animals and that driveway is so close to, to Broadway that it has been a challenge. But if there's an option to go further, further south, that'll be great. I'm going to move approval of, of the application contingent on Comfort Lake Star, Forest Lake permitting and all of the staff and city engineer comments.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Miller?
I'd second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Commissioner Betty? Commissioner Betty, you're on mute.
Quite, yeah. Just a quick question here. Donovan, how's this, how's this additional architectural elements that you're asking for? Talk to me a little bit about process here, how that's going to, how, how does that happen and how does that get monitored?
That, that it would be, you know, administered by staff. And the zoning code does provide additional options. It's kind of like a, you know, the, the menu approach where there are three design elements that can be included. Right now, the, that addition, and this is just relates to the public fundages. You know, the, the addition does contain contrasting colors and horizontal variation in building materials. So it has those two elements. So it could be additional architectural detailing of it, cornice, awning, parapet or column. The, there could be, you know, false windows put in, like the gone building has going toward, you know, Frontier Highway 61. You know, the building shape could be made irregular in some way or architectural feature that isn't within the overall architectural concept. So something that may be wrapped around the building more. So that's what I'd be looking for as far as just, as far as a resubmitted, you know, building elevation.
Yeah, no, I, I understand what, what needs to be done. I just was curious about how it was going to happen or how it was going to be monitored. And now you answered my question.
Other discussion on the motion? Seen none. I'll give my comments. I, I think the plan looks, looks great and the, the expansion of that business corridor on Broadway is very fitting on this particular property. And I have, I have full confidence in staff on the, the changes that are, are necessary to get this one through. So Karen, can you, was there any further discussion? Seen none. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Betty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Langness?
Aye. Motion carries. Joe Vis Lysel, I'm still not pronouncing that right. And Steve, I wish you, wish you luck on your project and I hope you're here for many, many more years as well. Thank you. We are moving on to item number, originally labeled as item number 12 in our agenda, Site Plan Review Application, 231 19th Street Southwest, better known as Forest Lake Jeep. Donovan, are you ready to present on this?
Certainly. I'd like to present the site plan review for another local business. This is the, the Jeep dealership that is part of that Chrysler Dodge Ram. You know, dealership property on the, just west of, of Highway 61 and 19th Street Southwest. It addresses, is 231. And what's proposed is to put a on the, on the south side of the building, put in basically more branded Jeep edition. I'll mention also that currently Greg Dolling is the architect in the project who's representing the owner today in the application. And so we can see that, you know, this is kind of the branding that Jeep does require and our, our local dealer Randy Wilcox is expanding the building and saying that Jeep is really, there's still a lot of Jeeps. So they need to expand. So you can see here, the number two building is the existing building. And what is proposed is basically what's shown in, in the gray area here, that's, that's an expansion on the, the west and some, some east, I'm sorry, that's south and east side. So you know, the rear and side, you know, from 19th. Again, that's the, to orient you, the right above here is Interstate 35. And that's the main expansion. They're doing some restriping. They're, they're moving two light poles. There is some, I believe some improvements in the infiltration. However, this site is virtually totally impervious. They're going through some watershed approvals relating to the stormwater features. And summarizing the, the improvements does involve some demolition and then putting some aluminum composite metal panels on the outside. And then, and, you know, actually much more extensive interior improvements. But regarding the site, we do see that they are, they, there are signage planned for both the 35 frontage with this Jeep sign, which is the maximum 30 feet for, the code allows for signs adjacent to 35. And then this Chrysler Dodge Ram sign is proposed on the 19th Street side. And I, I did make a note that, and I've talked about this with the project architect, that this needs to be shortened a little bit to meet code as far as being only as tall as the lowest portion of the roof and just being 100 square feet in size to meet code. No new access is proposed. And the, you know, there's no, really no current landscaping on the site and there's no landscaping plan proposed. And this is similar to the Chrysler expansion that line commission reviewed a couple of years ago. And I believe it's, it's appropriate not to include landscaping in, in the, in the new, new portion as, as part of that site improvements. And also this, this application is to be reviewed at Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District, August 27th Board Meeting. And it being, you know, a private, you know, site as far as the parking, no public infrastructure, the, the seat engineers' comments relate mostly to just some of the details of the site work. No, no huge, you know, additional requirements. And at this point, the staff recommendation is for approval with with condition, with some conditions. And I'm happy to take in questions from the planning commission.
Commissioners, any questions on the staff report? Seen, seen none. Donovan, who, who was it that's presenting?
It's Greg Dolling.
Greg, do you have anything to present to the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yeah, my name is Greg Dolling with Finn Daniels Architects here on behalf of the owner and really not that much additional to say. As, as Donovan mentioned, the current dealership that's just to the south of this building is the Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram facility. The Jeep component is being pulled out of that building and we're remodeling this building, which currently operates as a, kind of a extra source for the owner or detailing and, and sales. And this is going to be a Jeep standalone facility. And if you're familiar with that building, it's been there for a number of years. It's old, it's, it's in need of some TLC. And this remodel shows the Jeep required features and, and finishes and, and is really going to turn that building into a sharp looking building for that area. And yeah, I, I'm, any questions you might have, I'm available to answer those.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, questions with the applicant? I have, I have one Greg, and I'm not certain how familiar you are with that specific property beyond the architecture, but I did swing in there this weekend while I happened to be in the area visiting a retailer. And while I was just trying to kind of envision the, the building and its placement there and how it functions, the parking lot particularly, it would be directly to the east or between its, its building and the freeway has kind of a loop that goes up and comes back. And it was completely barricaded by vehicles that are for sale parked all over the place. And one of the lanes just to the west had, had similar, but it wasn't as blocked. You could have gotten around. And what was going through my head and one of the things I always think about is, is public safety. And if there was a fire in that building or an emergency need there, it would have been near impossible to get to that side of the building. In this expanded use of the property for Jeep there, can you walk me through how you're going to ensure that the, the parking lot functions that you're putting in as an architect work long-term and that some of those continued aspects don't happen after this rebuild?
I'll try. So as, as I design the layout, I'm designing the parking spacing and lanes for the city code standards. And how operations may park things after that fact is out of my control, but I know part of this process is the, the business that's in that blue and white building, the old Ford sales building there. That Randy purchased a building on the east side of 35 that that operation is being moved to. And then the Jeep sales is moving into this building. So the hope and intent is that that's going to alleviate some of the parking that's used in that area. Just by nature of portion of the business that's currently operating between those two buildings is now moved to the other side of the road. So as far as maintaining those parking lanes and driveways, I'd have to defer that to the owner as far as how they can continue to police and, and control that so that it's, it's maintained in that state.
Thank you. Commissioner Brink?
I was just curious to share, like, this, if you'd be able to share your screen and I'm interested in the specific area you were talking about where there was a blockage.
Cert- certainly. Let me pull it up on on Google. I actually look at my thing on a different computer here, but I can pull it up on a.
Do you have screen check capability?
I believe I believe so. I've
There you go. You have privileges.
I think Karen gives me all the accesses. Doesn't mean I know how to use them. So. I don't know how staff ever fixes this, but that's running aces in Columbus when I pull up Forest Lake. So.
We're trying to grab their glory.
It this is the building that is expanded. And I drove in and of course, the the parking was is very different on Saturday when I was in there, but I I set my car right here and kind of was envisioning the building expanded here. This loop right here, this was completely full of cars and then there was cars blocking all up here. So if you drove in here accidentally, you had to kind of weasel your way back or if you went in here. It and then there there was significant blocking here. You couldn't access the entrance essentially to what comes into the the Goodwill drop off there. This is all cars here. And in fact, on the side here, they actually had a number of cars blocking part of the Goodwill lane even, although I I was less concerned about that because really if if they're disrupting Goodwill, that's probably Goodwill's onus to work with them directly to fix that piece. But I saw the main safety concern is on on this side in this loop. But there was a secondary piece here. Does that help?
Yes.
Other questions of the applicant or staff from commissioners? If you could hang on, Greg, sometimes other questions come up. We'll move into discussion and or a motion if any commissioner so wishes. Commissioner Miller?
I would make a motion to approve this this property at 231 19th Street Southwest with the five staff recommendations.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I believe that was Commissioner Keen that seconded. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on the item? Seen, I'll I'll say my comment. I'm going to support the motion. I think it's a good plan. I will note, I'm I'm a Ford guy, so it's tough for me to support a Jeep expansion, but I think it's a good plan. I would really reiterate to the owners and it's it's not just this car dealership, it's car dealerships in general that do that. But but it was it was exaggerated enough there where there was there was safety concerns. And if you can reiterate that to the owners to improve that before before the city has to or before it it makes for a bad scenario. I'm comfortable with that conversation happening in the background and not in the motion, so I'll support it. Is there other discussion on this item? Seen none. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote? The motion is to approve with the staff recommendations as outlined.
Commissioner Young?
Hi.
Commissioner Batty?
Hi.
Commissioner Miller?
Hi.
Commissioner Keen?
Hi.
Commissioner Brink?
Hi.
Chair Lagnes?
I. Motion carries. Greg, good luck on the project.
Thank you very much to all of you.
We're moving on to what was on the original agenda as item number 13, the grading permit application at 447 oh 220th Street, otherwise known as the Minnesota Lakes Mini Storage. Donovan, you going to kick us off here?
Certainly. Chair members of the planning commission like to present the grading permit for the proposed Minnesota Lakes Mini Storage located at 447 220th Street, which is on that west side of Everton, just south of Gateway Green. Commissioners will recall that this first appeared before the before the planning commission in May and was tabled. However, we've now reached the point due to the the state statute of 60 day rule, which has been extended 120 days by the city, that tonight's the night where the city is mandated to make a decision on it, or it is approved by force of law. And so I'd like to present the 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 grading plan. And this is the one that is was subject of the last preliminary PUD review that planning commission did approve in in or didn't recommend approval of and council did approve in in July. And so this is this is a different grading plan. This is the grading plan from that application. And it shows 324 units. It retains the the buffer on that north side. Here, I'll zero in a little bit on that. As you can see, you know, the the tree buffer is retained. And this is the the plan that also the fire chief had reviewed for fire truck navigability. The city engineer didn't have concerns with they're working with some revised storm calculations regarding their their Rice Creek Washington District permitting. This has the and that's all getting actually, I'm sorry, I'm getting it myself. That's the next agenda item. So this grading plan basically allows for the the making the pad, including, you know, creation of, you know, the stormwater pond contours to allow for the future development. But at this point, you know, this is not the approval for that. It's essentially allowing for tree removal and then you're grading the 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 site to this plan. And, you know, be happy to take any questions from the planning commission at this point.
Commissioners, questions on the staff report? Seen none. Dick Bazzini, did you have anything additional on here you wanted to add?
This is Jerry Anderson. I'm with Dick. No, we we don't have anything to add. We brought the plans and everything up to date to correspond with the agreement that we made that you reviewed and made recommendations to the city council. And we followed through with those agreements with the council as well. So we're back with the grading plan.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Seen none. Commissioners, Gary and Dick, just hang on. We may have a question that pops up during discussion. Commissioners, if you have a motion or discussion on the item, Commissioner Young?
I move approval of the grading plan with comments and rec what subject to the comments and recommendations of city staff and the engineer.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Miller, is that your second?
A second.
Discussion? Commissioner Betty, did you have your hand up for discussion or were you attempting a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. See seen no discussion. We have a motion for approval as staff outlined. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Young?
Hi.
Commissioner Batty?
Hi.
Commissioner Miller?
Hi.
Commissioner Keen?
Hi.
Commissioner Brink?
Hi.
Chair Lagnes?
I. Motion carries. And we are now moving on to item number 15, the variance app or the item number 15 on the original agenda, variance application for 20921 Explorer Avenue North that was tabled from the July 27, 2020 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Gary, Gary and Dick, there is, and I believe you you wish to stay, there is two parts to your specific application. There is item number 14 on our agenda, which is three items down on the amended agenda from the beginning, which is the final PUD. I assume you want to stick around for that.
Will hang in there. Thank you.
Thank you. We're on the original item number 15, the variance application for 209 Explorer Avenue that was tabled from July 27, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Donovan, do you have presentation here?
Certainly. And I am realizing that it, you know, I'm not seeing what I want to see in that staff memo and involves a resubmitted survey. And it it shows a amended deck plan, which I will share with you. So this is, you know, again, this is tabled from a July meeting. And and where the applicant did receive some feedback from the planning commission members and they and the applicant has returned with a plan that I, you know, appears to, you know, address a lot of the concerns. Shown here in the schematic is they've shifted the deck to the west side of the property. They've changed their requested variance to a four foot variance, assuming that at the greatest extent the 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 deck will encroach, you know, six feet a total, but four feet into the setback for the unclassified water body here, shown by that pond edge there. And in their narrative, they know that this is, you know, to enable them to have the wheelchair access to the deck on the on the west side for some elderly relatives who they expect to come visit. And so, again, this is just requesting the, you know, the the four foot encroachment within this at pond edge. And I will like to bring up the believe that did have a revised survey here. And can you see this this now? A revised survey plan. Okay. And so this shows, you know, a little more clear from the bird's eye view, the proposed deck. And this is what they ask for the the planning commission to consider and staff recommends approval of this. The four foot set encroachment upon this unclassified water body setback. Happy taking questions from the planning commission.
Are there questions from Commissioner Commissioner Batty? Commissioner Batty, you're on mute.
So the only depiction of where this actual setback is on this little isometric here, right? And it's a kind of the little line with kind of dashes and circles and stuff on it. Is that the setback line?
The
It doesn't make sense.
Okay, well, that is the setback line. There's the dashes.
Okay, so it must. Okay, all right. So I see the 25 and the 22 now. So it would be you got three foot more to work with on the on the left hand side of that, I guess that I'm not sure which demand, which direction things are here. Probably I guess that would be the west side.
Yeah, this is west.
Yeah. Okay. So so that it's it's where the encroachment takes place is on the on the right hand or the east half of that there then.
Correct.
Otherwise, it's conforming.
Yes.
Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yeah, basically. I mean, there, you know, I generally interpret decks by the the deck, you know, that the surface. Here, there is some overhang proposed. So I think it's arguable if, you know, I don't know if actually any is conforming, but it's four foot at the largest, you know, dimension of encroachment.
Which is at the east end.
Correct.
Okay.
It'll be about one, one feet, you know, on this on this other end here on the west side.
Other questions from commissioners on the staff report? David and or Dietrich Shox, do you wish to add anything to the conversation or present to us?
We'd love to. First of all, thank you, commissioners, for your time again this evening and for your continued consideration of our requests. So after our initial, our initial meeting, we thoughtfully considered your feedback and met with our contractor and feel that we've come up with a proposal that satisfies the commission's guidance and while meeting the needs of our family. So on June 23, we had submitted the original zoning application regarding our request to build the deck on our property at 20129 Explorer Avenue North, Forest Lake, Minnesota 55025. That specific narrative was that the variance we request is for 10 feet to place deck footings 10 feet from the pond. So the current requirement includes a setback of 20 feet from the pond edge. Our proposed deck is eight feet in height, 12 feet in depth and 24 feet in width. On the 22nd of July, the planning commission reviewed our request held the public hearing regarding the application. Our original proposal wasn't accepted as written, but a decision to table the proposal was initiated. The planning commission's recommendation was for us to submit a different plan for a deck that would be primarily located on the west side of our house, where it would not intrude upon the pond edge setback. For that recommendation, we are submitting this amendment with a new proposal. So as you saw from that drawing, that the variance we request is to build a deck that includes a walkway from the second floor sliding glass door on the south side of the home that extends 30 feet to the west. We are requesting a two foot variance into the pond setback. The two foot variance is required to allow for deck footings to be placed four feet from the south side of the house. We are also requesting to cantilever up to two feet to the south of the house. We are requesting the cantilever of up to two feet because the minimum distance needed to turn a wheelchair in a walkway per the Americans with Disabilities Act is five feet. And the regulation that we cited is A 4.2.3. We have immediate family who require the use of wheelchairs and walkers. The primary deck area would be on the west side of the house. It would extend 10 feet from the west side of the house and be a total length of 14 feet to the north. So kind of in summary, we're we think that we're requesting a reasonable width for a walkway to allow independent access for all of our family, including those close family who are walker and wheelchair dependent. And on that application, I've I've actually quoted the ADA passage on that. And then with the plan that we're submitting, the deck footings would only extend a maximum of two feet into the pond setback. But I understand that that the cantilever would make that four foot request. I had I didn't know if that was the way that that worked or not, if it was just based on the footings. But then in addition, we wanted just to point out that the footings that we're going to use are diamond pure foundation. And if you look in the amendment that we submitted, it's technology that requires no excavation, doesn't weaken the soil or block or exaggerate water flow or drainage. So in closing, we hope that you find this to be an acceptable proposal and we remain flexible in our plan. Do you have anything you want to add? Okay.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there questions of the applicant? Commissioner Young?
Not a question of the applicant. No, not a question of the applicant.
Oh, okay. Commissioners, were there questions of the applicant? Oh, okay. Commissioners, were there questions of the applicant? If David and Deidre, if you could hang on, we're going to move out of the presentation and into commissioners discussion. Commissioner Young, did you want to start that off?
Yes, please. I, I truly appreciate the work that the applicant has gone through to, to respond to our comments. I think that you've got a, a much, from my perspective, a, a much better. Proposal and I'm going to move a, move approval of the amended proposal. As presented in the August fifth memorandum from staff to the planning commission. With the four recommendations of staff.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Brink seconded discussion. Not seen any. I, Commissioner Young, I, I very much agree with your comment. And I understand the applicant's. Frustration with finding out about these types of regulations ten, fifteen years after they buy a home. That a developer probably shouldn't have built the way they built it. But I do want to note for the record that. I'm supporting this and, and I think this is always important on the record. I'm supporting this variance. Very specifically because I think it is the minimal amount of variance necessary. For a reasonable walkway along that house should such a similar scenario come down the road. I do hope this deck fits their needs as well. So I'm going to support the, the motion as presented. Is there other discussion? Seen none. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote? The motion is to approve as recommended by staff.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Lagnes?
Aye. Motion carries. David and Deidre, I, I wish you the best of luck on, on your deck and I, I hope that the. The, the process brings you to a, a place that satisfies your, your needs.
Yeah, we feel that, that this new design will be great. So thank you very much to you and the commission. Appreciate it. Thank you, Donovan.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we are moving to the original. Agenda item number eight, the conditional use permit amendment for two oh nine two oh Forest Road. Otherwise known as interstate removal or interstate companies. This will include a public hearing and then we'll consider the application. So we will go through. So for, for those members of the public that wish to speak at public hearings tonight, the, the process is that we will first have a staff presentation. We'll bring it back to commissioners for questions that they have on the staff. We'll open it up to the applicant to, to give any presentation. Commissioners may ask them questions. Then we'll open up the public hearing. We'll either pull you in on Zoom or if you comment that you wish to speak in the public hearing on the comment thing. You can, you can do that now if you're not in Zoom with that access at this point and, and staff can get that for you. And then we'll bring it back to commissioners for discussion and consideration of a motion. Donovan, you're going to kick us off here?
Certainly. Chair, members of Plan Commission, I'd like to present. This, you know, is both a conditional use permit amendment. Or interstate removals, interstate investments is the owner with the property located at. Two zero nine two zero Forest Road. This is actually located just a little bit south of the intersection of Highway ninety seven and Forest Road here with Highway sixty one there on the east. Primary access is, is through Forest Road. With the existing building here shown. And what is proposed is an expansion of the operations into this southern ten acre parcel. There was recently. Part of a lot line adjustment. So that there is, you know, room now to expand the operation. You know, the zoning code does not list this type of use as a conditional use. So the second part of this, the next agenda item here relates to basically. And men, admitting the zoning text to allow this. This use. And the. You know, but this is similar to that interim use permit involved with the agricultural use behind Menards where we're playing a little bit of catch up. So that's why that's the importance of the zoning text amendment is to basically allow, you know, define this use and then allow it in this industrial zoning. Now getting back to the. To the. To the, what's interstate is proposing. Like to share with you the site plan. And here on, on the shaded areas, you can see the existing parking lot and existing building with the office area. What they're proposing is access to a large vehicle and inventory storage area. Within this ten acre site. No Forest Road access is being proposed. And so what they're proposing is basically putting, you know, storage area using trap rock as a surface material. Over a, a rock service material that the city is requiring. Not be gravel that'd be a trap rock. And with some access between the stormwater ponds. This is a feature where there's a huge watershed that flows through here with Rice Creek watershed district. Pondage easements running through here and then also through here and then all the way down to ninety seven, then the Clear Lake. So that's a big part of the, of the site is the stormwater ponds. That are proposed. They're the treat, you know, the large area and they're also wetlands in the site which. The site plan does not propose any. Impact on. And the. So there's no new lighting, no new structures proposed in this CUP amendment. There's existing CUPs from year two thousand and twenty eleven that exists for the site and the twenty eleven one was to build. Large exist, you know, structured for salt storage. And so this is a CUP amendment and the. Amendment itself. You know, is, is for the storage yard and conditions that are required relate to, you know, the. An ancient fence, screen fence. On the, you know, outside project boundaries. And also including a, this is an engineered. Requirement to have the fence actually on the east side of the stormwater facilities to enable access for a sort of, if there's city maintenance required. I'll also mention that. There is landscaping plan. It's proposed to have the screening landscaping along Forest Road. Also, city engineer requirement is to have this outside the drainage till the easement. You know, within ten feet back from the, the property line to allow for those private utilities in the future. And the, there's no proposed extension of the water and sewer to decide it not be needed, this type of use. But the city is cognizant that, you know, there could be, you know, or inevitably there will be development to the south. To the east side of what, what you see in the plan now. And the city is requiring that they're. The twenty twenty construction cost to extend that water line approximately thirty two thousand dollars. You put an escrow for that future expansion rather than requiring that expansion now is a condition of approval. And then actually have to put a gate valve here on the city preferring actually putting one longer line in without additional valves to maintain. And the city's not requiring any improvement of Forest Road at this time either. Not, not knowing what in the future will be required for that. For, for the capacity of that road, which is currently gravel and city has done some improvements on it, not, not. Not too distant past to improve that, but still gravel road and the city would like to retain. The ability to, to future assess this property for those road improvements to be, to be considered. You know, to, to be determined in the future. The, the city engineer did provide his comment letter, which came after the, the staff package came out and I did provide it to the interstate project team. It does have what I mentioned as far as the placement of landscaping ten feet away from the property line. And then. Really to, if related to that escrow for the future water line extension and fence on the east side of the, the drainage dishes. And. And at this point, staff is recommending. Plan Commission approval of the CUP amendment, but this is contingent upon the. The zoning text amendment also being approved by council. But that's, we'll get that to the next agenda item. Happy taking questions from the plan commission this time.
Are there questions from commissioners? Commissioner Young? Commissioner Young, you're on mute.
Okay, two questions. One. This is a really significant area that is going to be impervious surface. Does the watershed, is this in, this is Rice Creek watershed?
Correct.
And have they determined the effect on either downstream or Clear Lake of the additional runoff potential?
The, you know, Tim Hool is the project engineer. He's on the call with us along with Jim Robertson representing owner and owner and applicant. And I think Tim can speak to that. What I know is that the, the Rice Creek watershed district permitting has not been completed. But Tim could provide you more details on that.
Good evening, commission members. So yes, we have submitted actually several iterations to the Rice Creek watershed district. The site plan that Donovan had up earlier had fairly large stormwater ponds. That will be constructed to handle the new impervious as well as. As Donovan mentioned, there's quite a drainage area coming from the south. And so the proposed improvements will also address those drainage areas. We have. Received comments from Rice Creek watershed district. The last one that we're actually trying to address relates to wetlands. As Donovan showed on the site plan, we are not directly impacting the wetlands and we're diverting any stormwater. Into those stormwater management ponds. However, the, so we're meeting the stormwater side of Rice Creek watershed district's requirements. And they are aware of the bigger picture of where that water drains. But the wetland folks at Rice Creek watershed district want to know how we're going to maintain. Water into the wetlands. So we're, we're working on that.
Okay, I, I'll follow up. Um, how are you making sure that you don't have any salt draining into those ponds because. Quite frankly. Unless you're using some, some sort of geomembrane. The salt will, will enhance the permeability. And. And you'll get some migration subsurface. What is, what is your proposal on making sure that you do not have any salt water flow into those ponds?
I guess I'm not completely understanding the question in regards to. Are you talking about like salt loading issues and maybe displacing additional salt? I mean, all. All layout yards have some form of salt coming off the vehicles. That's natural in the wintertime in Minnesota. So those stormwater ponds do have a, a detention retention capacity to them, but I guess I would. I, I would defer to Jim or Greg. I, I believe they're going to be using, you know, appropriate methodologies of loading trucks and storing salt that wouldn't. Wouldn't create runoff situations.
I'm really familiar with public works yards and, and salt issues and I'm, what I'm asking is, have you got? What are you doing to make sure that you, as you are loading and unloading and, and you don't have any contamination from your salt, salt storage facilities that are going into those ponds?
Yeah, so speaking on that, you know, we don't plan on moving any salt storage or salt loading operations over to that side of our property or expanding it beyond, you know, where we're currently at. Any salt loading that does take place currently is on a asphalt apron that is pitched back into our building. So anything that spills or, or. You know, comes off the trucks is, is right back in the pile and in the impervious surface.
All right, thank you. Donovan, how is? I'd like to better understand why a zoning amendment is going to be needed if we approve the changes to the conditional use permit. I need to know better how these two are linked.
Okay, so the, right now, there, you know, interstate's been there since the town days. I mean, at least since two thousand, you know, is. Eagle, well, Eagle Trucking, well, interstate's been there, I mean, as itself, but essentially the use was established long before with, you know, large vehicle parking, you know. You know, supply storage, that sort of thing. We can, can we agree on that?
We'll get there.
Okay, so anyways, okay, let's just jump to twenty eleven. You know, it, interstate came, you know, took control of the property, wanted to, you know, do some site improvements. They, they, they received the CUP amendment. Within the permitted and conditional uses of industrial zoning district in which this property is located, there is not a, this, a, a use that translates into what they do. And consistent with our city attorney guidance, you know, if there's going to be a use. We need, you know, allowed in a zoning district and interstate's not going away, that we should actually. Listed as a conditional use because it's already been established as one. And so what I've done is defined. As the zoning text amendment says, is to define this use, define use standards with the intention that. We like interstate, but maybe that's not, you know, something we want to have all throughout our industrial zoning district. As far as, it seems like, you know, the purpose of the industrial zoning district are more along the team vanish lines, the more intensive. You know, job creator, intense, you know, higher value. Buildings, that sort of thing, which is not to, you know, put any shade on interstate. I really appreciate what they do and actually learning more about, you know. This, this application has been in the works probably for, I mean, eighteen months or so. So I've had some opportunities to visit the site. Talk to Greg and Jim. Sorry, Greg, I missed you on that introduction there. And learn they really serve a, a real need and have a unique. Presence within their, you know, their property maintenance. Snow removal business throughout the metro. Importing like special salt by trains from Utah, for instance. Something that, so, but understands that they still are essentially a contractor yard. And we, you know, I do get many inquiries for this type of use. Many of them aren't of interstate's caliber really. And knowing that we often have screen problems with these type of uses. They, they do provide, you know, real jobs, good jobs. However, a lot of it is just equipment storage, a lot of vehicles parked on site. And. The, so the zoning text amendment both is to permit this as a conditional use as well as apply some performance standards. So that we can bolster interstate as, as an existing use, but to discourage. Future uses except with these certain given conditions like having, you know, a ten acre site, for instance. future uses except with these certain given conditions, like having, you know, a 10 acre site, for instance.
I'm they they have an existing conditional use that is a permitted conditional use. Does they have a conditional use permit, which we are modifying this evening? I I hope. I still don't understand why you need a zoning in order to make this this come together. Why a required zoning text amendment is needed for all industrial properties? And why we cannot continue to have this as a standalone conditional use, recognizing their unique needs through the conditional use permitting process?
I mean, not to throw the city attorney under the bus, but if it was up to me, I I would really be of your of your opinion that this conditional use was was issued twice on this property. What they're proposing now is consistent with the use. And, you know, because it's with that use. And and obviously, they're actually doing a kind of environmental good with all the stormwater management. It's currently not not there with along that flowage line. And, you know, I I actually, you know, I think I misspoke because I did not make make, you know, the recommendation is not contingent on the zoning text amendment being approved by council. So I did decouple that, but nevertheless, I'm following what the city attorney's guidance is that in some ways, it's just kind of a legal clarity, legal, you know, neatness to have a use that's you're permitting in some form listed as a permitted, you know, in this case, conditional use, conditionally permitted use within the zoning text.
It will be a conditional use and not a use by right.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions on the staff report? Commissioner Keen?
My only concern is, I mean, I'm very familiar with the company. It's a great company. But it's with this much acreage that they're looking for for storage. Are they going to be using this to haul and store snow that's been removed from other parking lots? Because they've got big businesses. And and then then I'm concerned about the runoff from the salt and stuff, the auto parts, the grease, the, I mean, just plain garbage. I know it's all on their property, but that's a lot of salt. And that's my only concern is that this facility is going to be used as a where they're going to be hauling in truckloads of snow all winter long, or after every snowfall, and then let it melt into these holding ponds.
Mike, I can assure you that that definitely will not happen. That that is not any part of our business model nor something we would do, you know, for those reasons, let alone it just it just doesn't make sense to do that with what we do.
Other questions on the staff report commissioners? All right, I know we have a few people ours. From the applicant side here, was there any of you that wished to add or present anything additional to us?
Greg Dumpke with Interstate, I I don't have anything to add. Appreciate the time. Appreciate the consideration and hopefully can move forward quickly. We've owned the property now for a couple of years. As Don had Donovan had mentioned, we are improving the watershed condition that that's currently there. Hopefully, you know, hopefully that can be seen in the in the holding ponds and, you know, how it will directly influence the Race Creek Watershed and the drainage into Clear Lake.
Are there questions of the applicant from commissioners? All right, I believe we have next a necessity to hold a public hearing. And so we will do that remotely here. So Donovan, you look like you're at City Hall?
Yes.
Do we have members there or anyone online ready to speak to this?
I do not see anyone here at City Hall. We have three attendees. And it appears they want to speak on the next agenda, next, you know, Minnesota Lakes Agenda Item. But if you do want to speak on this, please raise your hand and I will promote you to a panelist. Or maybe that's maybe, I guess, Karen, you have that that ability. I don't. But we would, we could promote you to speak if you so desire at this public hearing.
All right. So we will open the public hearing for those wishing to speak at the public hearing. It is required that you state your name and address. So we have that for the record. You can say whatever you wish to us. If there's technical questions that weren't answered in the staff report, staff may be able to answer that for you directly in the public hearing, but generally commissioners do not engage in conversation in public hearing. So there's anyone wishing to speak? Please let us know. Karen or Donovan, do you have anyone?
No.
No.
All right, we'll give it like 30 seconds here and just in case there's a technical piece that somebody's trying to get on. All right. Still no one, Karen Donovan? No one's walked into City Hall?
No.
Perfect. We'll close the public hearing and we'll bring this back to the commission for consideration on the application. Commissioners? Commissioner Young?
One of the things that I had asked Donovan about offline was that back back in 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 the dark ages, a long, long ago, there when Eagle Trucking came in there, there had been an agreement that Eagle Trucking and subsequent entities would not try to make a turn from Forest Road onto 97 left or westward. And Donovan did research that and told me that it is not in the current conditional use or or the one immediately previous. This is becoming more and more of a problem. We all know that that 97 there is is not a significantly safe road. And those those left turns are becoming more and more of an issue. I know that Mendat is going to be evaluating that section of the road within the next couple of years. It's on their list. And it would not surprise me that they would seek continued use of baggage roads such as was required up by quick trip. So that's just a a future consideration that is not part of tonight's conditional use, since it was not included in interstate's conditional use permit, but it is a concern that I have. And I would just like the the owners to be aware of that, please.
And thank you.
It wouldn't surprise me if it turned into like what I believe it's Centennial is near the Broadway Roundabout where it's right in, right out and in all honesty, coming out of Forest Road there, it's probably easier to turn right, hook around the roundabout and and head west. And I think that's as simple as a conversation with those drivers. It probably improves your your safety level.
And then they're not sitting at the stop site for or stop sign for five, 10 minutes waiting, right? So time is money, right? Try to keep moving, but.
Maybe that's what they want to do so they can drink their coffee or something.
Something way to holiday to get their coffee. Yeah.
All right, commissioners, we're at the point where we can entertain a motion. Commissioner Young?
I will move approval of the conditional use permit as presented by in the staff memo with the requirements of staff and city engineer. And approving the findings of fact.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Keen seconded. Is there a discussion on the motion? Commissioner Miller?
I just wanted to be clear with Commissioner Young's motion that we were the conditional use permit amendment for 20920 Forest Road? With the
That is an amendment to the conditional use permit. Adopting the findings of fact and subject to the staff and city engineer recommendations.
Thank you. I just missed that.
Any other discussion on the motion? My only comment is I I I'm kind of surprised that it took 18 months to get this far and I I can chat with Donovan offline as to maybe how we can make our processes better. That that seems like a really long time before we see an application. I'm I'm glad to hear that the the concerns of of salt and and those pieces are met by Commissioner Young by moving the motion here. As I know that that is your expertise. I'm happy to move forward with this as well. Is there other discussion on the item? Seeing the motion is approval as outlined in our agenda. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Lagnes?
Aye. Motion carries to the applicants. I wish you the best of luck with the watershed district. I suspect you're going to have more challenges with them than you will us.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Commissioners, we are moving to item number 14 on the original agenda. This is the final planned unit development application at 4470 220th Street. The Minnesota Lakes Mini Storage. This does require a public hearing prior to us considering the applicant. Commissioner Miller? Did I miss something?
Commissioner Lagnes, I think we missed item nine.
The zoning text amendment.
Thank you. I am so sorry. Yes. I have this list. You guys made the the most complicated agenda for me today. I suppose I didn't help in that with my amendment to it. We are on item number nine, zoning text amendment, allowing contractor yard as a conditional use in the industrial MB2 zoning districts. This will include a public hearing prior to us considering the application. Donovan, do you want to kick us off on this? As the city is the applicant here, correct?
Correct. Yeah. So this is basically for zoning text clarity cleanliness. If you if you might notice, at the end of almost every zoning district standards, you know, the number of uses, it's there's this clause that, you know, and other uses as permitted by the city council, consistent with the zoning district standards. That's everything. And that kind of was used for a lot of these exceptions. We can see them around anything from the old, you know, Aqua Restaurant to the the cement plant on 11th and Interstate. Those sort of things. And so I believe that, you know, this original CUP amendment by the city in 2011 also kind of fell into that similar mold. And so what I'm trying to do is is to do something of a corrective action for that. And so the first thing would be to define, you know, is to show kind of what the context is here. Currently, this is, you know, industrious industrious own land shown by the purple. The the future land use plan act, you know, has just shown as highway commercial, which could then translate into the B2 Highway Business District. So this is, again, this is 97 here is this forest road. So it includes, you know, the property that interstate is expanding into as well as pretty much all this frontage property in the south side, 97, all the way up to the Quick Trip. Includes, you know, some some properties that are currently in something of a similar, like the St. Croix Forge, which I guess is, you know, manufacturing, but, you know, commercial use. But to actually define what interstate does there on this property is what I've come up with is to call it a contractor yard, which I've defined as a fenced and screened site for the purpose of storage of work vehicles and inventory material and supplies using the maintenance, repair and improvement of structures and improved property. So this would fit in that the definition section of the zoning code. And then next, understanding that contractor yard is not something we want to have dominate the industrial zoning district or create a series of performance standards. This would fit in the section of the zoning code that relates to use standards coming at RR. And the the standards I've set up would be the for a minimum size of 10 acres, at least for a contractor yard. That there must be a substantial improvement of a a structure, you know, served by the public utilities. So it sounds simply a pole barn of at least 20,000 square feet on the parcel and the property must be at least 250 feet from a state or federal highway. So that we don't have this type of property this type of use, you know, along our state and federal highways. So there'll be a local road access. And then finally, actually listing it in the conditional use, you know, as a contractor yard. There you can see that other uses similar to those permitted in the section, which, you know, had been used before, but our, you know, current city attorney guidance is to actually add the uses that we're we have. So that's a conditional use and then predicting that this parts that this, you know, this forced road property will become highway business. Also listing it as a contractor yard is a conditional use in that the B2. And obviously, the the B2 district is what we see all along 12th Street Southwest, the big box retail along the freeway, the car dealerships, hotel, other large retailers, restaurants. And there really aren't any 10 acre sites over there and economics wouldn't work for this type of business to even locate there. What, you know, what could be a what could be something that we might see would be if the you know, if if we did include this in in the B2, as I mentioned, like these other B2, future B2 properties along the south side would be that McCullough property. This is pretty much all city owned, really not much development potential there. But then along here with the St. Croix Forge, I mentioned some property that's currently owned by GON. That was the Carlson Farm, that sort of thing. And there's Quick Trip there, which is that that MU2 zoning. So it's um, so that would in these, you know, our parcels that are, you know, could comply with that that tank ton acre lot minimum. And of course, you would need some backer road with no direct access from there to comply with that other feature. Well, it couldn't it couldn't locate directly adjacent to the to the highway. So those are the the basic use standards I've I've put there for this type of use. And this would allow for the 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 basically the this interstate to exist as a conditional use and continue to allow expansions. And but but do some little bit of cleanup for the zoning text. With that, I'm happy to take any questions for the from the plan commission. Also, just noting that this is zoning text amendment does require a public hearing as well as this is would be a recommendation from like commission to council for this change. And happy to take any questions from the side commission.
Commissioner Young?
Donovan, don't we also have a very large area of highway commercial use that was put in in the 2040 comp plan on 61?
That is actually that is a highway commercial. So it's That is a highway commercial. So it's actually would, is envisioned as a different type of zoning. You know, more warehouse use, um, more um, you know, transportation terminal. And e-commerce type. So it, it's actually not, wouldn't, wouldn't convert to the B2.
Thank you.
Other questions on the staff report? Seen none? We can move into the public hearing. Donovan, do we have anyone at city hall for this public hearing or are we aware of anyone on, uh, online that wishes to speak?
I do not, I do not see anyone here at city hall. Haven't heard anyone come in. And our attendees are the same um, attendees that were here in, I believe, are, are either just observing or waiting for um, the Minnesota Lakes application.
All right. To the attendees, um, if you wish to speak in the public hearing, please make note of it in the chat so you can be unlocked. Um, I will open up the public hearing uh, right now. We'll give it about thirty seconds for you to let staff know you want to be bumped in if you wish to speak. Karen Donovan, do we have anyone?
No.
No.
All right. We will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission to consider the application as a recommendation to council. Commissioners? Commissioner Miller?
It'll be easier if I just read it, but um, I would make a motion that uh, we recommend uh, city council approval to adopt an ordinance to amend one five three point one one zero and one five three point oh nine six RR, one five three point three three two and one five three point three two eight to define the land use, establish use standards and list the land use in uh, industrial and B2 highway business zoning districts.
There's been a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Batty, are you seconded?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Miller, um, I don't have the, the portion of the agenda pack it up in front of me to follow to you, but did you essentially motion as staff recommended?
I'm sorry. I'll make a motion as staff recommended to city council regarding the zoning text amendment to allow contractor yard in one and B2 zoning districts.
Y, y, your motion was completely fine. I, I just wanted to make sure I understood it right, that that's essentially what it was, right?
Pretty much.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Um, other discussion on the item? The last time we had very little discussion on a text amendment came back.
Are you threatening us?
I'm just saying. Um, the, the, the only, the only hesitation I have, and, and I guess this is a question of maybe Donovan, and I probably could have asked you this offline beforehand, but um, was there, we're, we're so close to, you know, approving the twenty forty text. Was there consideration to put it in that instead of immediate? I'm trying to understand the the rationale, but I am the attorney's purpose to do this sooner than have it fixed in the longer term.
Well, I mean, I didn't consult specifically for this one. I'm going by um, something that, you know, it's been kind of a longstanding concern. Um, this did pop up with like, you know, the Aqua Dock expansion, St., St., yeah, St. Croix. You know, cement batch plant. And, and then it goes with the, with the, that agricultural use, you know, just the behind um, Menards. Where we did do a similar process. So um, you know, I, I can't say it's a specific concern at this, for this application, but it seems to be a long, longstanding concern for them to have that sort of um, just the clarity. So that it's not just simply taking advantage of that other clause, you know, as other, other uses as allowed by council.
So there's not another project coming down the pipeline after this?
No. Um, well, no, I shouldn't say no, but-
That you're aware of?
I did have, I mean, I had some conversations with a local electrical contractor who was interested in the property to the west and basically, you know, in the idea that um, you know, of some sort of larger subdivision. So that so that uh, um, my phone is talking to me. Stop that. And uh, but uh, no, there's no, there's no proposal that's been presented to the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Young, I see your hand go up. You're on mute, Commissioner Young.
So basically, um, I don't think you were here Donovan when VINCO was a considerable discussion. That would essentially be a contractor yard also, correct?
That, yes.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry, this, this, I, 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 we are going to be looking at our zoning code and I don't believe that unless you're planning on taking out from all of the, the, the zoning texts, the quote, other uses similar to those permitted in this section as determined by the planning commission. And being very specific in each and every one of our other zoning uses, I don't think that we need a zoning code here, our zoning code amendment here and I, I'm just not ready to, to, to work on this. So y'all can do as, as you're going to see fit tonight, but this is not one that I'm going to support. Which is why I'm not making any motions.
Further discussion? Commissioner Young, um, would you entertain a question from me? Okay, you're, you're on mute, but I think you said sure. Um, the, the, the question, I want to, I want to understand your position better. I, I'm truly on the fence here. And, and I, I'm not understanding your reason to not support at this point.
A couple of things. One, um, we, we are going to be rewriting our zoning code. And it's going to be, it's going to be a, a significant rewrite of our zoning code and we're, we're going to have a lot of things that, that, that we'll be discussing and this could very easily fall into that zoning code rewrite. Second is Donovan said that for this, we have used the phrase other uses similar to those permitted in this section or as determined by the planning commission and city council. I consider that to be completely adequate um, for this use. And I don't believe that Donovan is going to be proposing to delete that language when we do the zoning code text amendments um, from all of our permitted or conditional uses. And I think that that gives us flexibility and that gives us opportunities to do conditional uses such as this in the future. And I just don't see the need for this zoning text amendment.
So if, if I were to paraphrase, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, I, I want to understand. It, it's not so much that you're against this, it's that you believe that this use already exists in our language and so it's unnecessary.
Yes, and I, and I am concerned about proliferation of this use throughout the city. If it's a listed use, conditional use.
Thank you. That is the point that I, I, I was missing from you. Thank you. Uh, further discussion from commissioners? All right, um, the motion on the table is to-
We haven't-
Commissioner Miller moved and I believe Commissioner Batty seconded. Um, I'm, I'm getting a nod from the clerk to approve. Um, there's no way I'm going to be able to repeat Commissioner's Miller's motion, but it was essentially the staff approval. Is, is that accurate to define, Commissioner Miller? Thank you. Further discussion, Commissioner Batty?
Yeah, I'm just, um, is this, uh, i- is the, the action that we took on the initial uh, motion, is that contingent on this? Yeah, it isn't, is it?
I didn't ask that specific question and Donovan said it is not.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry I missed that.
So Interstate will be able to do everything that they asked from our approval. Whether we support this or not. Is that correct Donovan?
Correct.
Further discussion? All right. Karen, um, we have a motion for approval as recommended by staff. Can please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Young?
Go.
Commissioner Batty?
Commissioner Batty, you're on mute.
No.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Yes.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Lagnes?
No. Motion, motion fails. Moving on to item number fourteen on the original agenda, is the final planned unit development application for, for seven oh, two hundred and twentieth street, Minnesota Lakes Mini Storage, holding a public hearing and prior to considering this application. Uh, Donovan, did you want to kick us off?
Certainly. Um, I'd like to present with, to you the, the final PUD application um, for the Minnesota Lakes Mini Storage located four, four, seven, zero, two hundred and twentieth street. That's in Everton Avenue, just south of Gateway Green on the west side of Everton Avenue. Like to sh, share with you the, the site plan. Which, you know, in this case, this application, we are focusing on the improvements, the self-storage facility. And this is the, the same plan that was, you know, approved um, at a preliminary review um, by council in July. And so, you know, what we have here is the, you know, that Everton, same Everton Avenue access. This has been reviewed by the fire chief for the vehicle access. Um, they do have the retaining walls along that northern kind of building wall line and retaining the woods to the north and woods to the west. Seven foot privacy fence is on that west side as well as, you know, in between the buildings as well as um, along that, that southern property line um, with some breaks for the, the stormwater pond. Again, again, providing that, that perimeter fencing. The uh, and then the landscaping is proposed to be on that, you know, for the arbividy on that northeast edge. And basically between, you know, where there isn't the uh, the tall retain wall for, for the, a large part on the northern side, completely on the, the west side, this, and the southwest side. And then just some um, also plantings around the, the stormwater management pond area here and, and then also on the Everton frontage and that's a chain link fence, not a privacy fence on that Everton frontage. You know, as um, seen here, actually, it's even between the two the two site plans, um, we did receive some additional written comments. And there's some, some uh, questioning around, you know, um, units added on that northwest corner. I provided the initial answer mean that, just saying that units were moved southward and some were shifted over to this west side and you can see some inconsistency with between the, that, on the landscaping plan base map as well as, as this one. And that, you know, actually, um, one, one email received this afternoon, um, which does uh, actually I have considerable concerns related to things we've discussed over, I believe it's the three for other times we discussed this application. I'd like to forward this to the applicant for him to respond. It relate to the concerns of, they did, um, perhaps, perhaps a question of will property values go down and concerns about traffic and color of the buildings? You know, setbacks. And concern about the removal of trees and um, and what type of tenants will rent space there. And, and these are, these are considerations that we've had much um, feedback for and the um, I believe the applicant has done much to, you know, modify their plan to address, you know, neighbor concerns. There is one thing I unfortunately have to admit that we did uh, mail public notice for this, but it was the wrong one. Actually, it was glad to say it was the, you know, I apologize to those who pointed out to me yesterday. And so, you know, if this, when this next goes to, this is simply a recommendation sought for this final PUD review, but when it goes to council, I'll make another mailing to um, alert um, residents to that, that, that meeting. So they have a chance if they, so does I, and if, if council is willing to provide additional public comment. So that, um, you know, our, our voices are heard here, but I believe that we've had extensive, um, you know, meetings, including a neighborhood meeting back in May um, regarding this. But like for, you know, residents to feel like that their, their voices are heard with this. And at this point, I'm happy to take any questions from planning commission.
Questions from commissioners on the staff report? The, the one comment I have, it's less, it's more of a comment, just to, rather than a question Donovan on the, the mailing. I, I appreciate you noting that to us. My advice would be should this pass tonight and move towards council? That you just have a, have a quick phone conversation with the city attorney and see if the city council should do a public hearing to accommodate any legal issue that we might have down the road on that. But I do agree, we've had ample opportunity, including the one we're about to have tonight. So the applicants, um, Gary and Dick, I know you've been waiting since the other motion we made for you. We'll pull you off mute if you want to present anything additional. You're still on mute. There you go.
There we go. I, I take it off you. I know, I just want to thank everybody for the input and it's been a journey, but I think we all came together and I think there's going to be a fantastic development for that piece of property for your city. So I am looking forward to moving ahead with this project. And once again, I thank Donovan for his help.
All right. Thank you. Um, commissioners, are there questions of the applicant? Seeing heads nod, but no uh, hands go up. If you guys want to hang on, we will move to open up the public hearing. Donovan? Do we have anyone at city hall? Karen, do we have anyone online for this one?
Well, there's a comment in the chat that looks like from Rocky. So I, I think everybody should be able to see it. So I think everybody should be able to see it, but it says, looks to us that the storage units were added to the northwest side. So I don't know if Rocky wants to speak.
I will, um, I will open up the public hearing. So if you wish to speak and you can't unmute yourself somehow, write in the chat so staff can work on that. So we will open up the public hearing at nine fifty PM. Please say your name and address for the record, and then we're here to, to listen.
Not seen any activity.
Donovan, is this the one that there was three people that had voiced interest in speaking?
There are three, two or three attendees are from the neighborhood.
Perhaps they just are observing. Okay. We will give it another thirty seconds here before we close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commission. No indication online, Karen?
No, just from Justin.
And Donovan, no one's rushed over into City Hall there, right?
No, sir.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the planning commission for consideration. Commissioners, Commissioner Young?
Donovan, this is, has there been any changes to the site layout since we tabled the grading plan?
Oh, certainly. I mean, the, the, all the woods to the north were retained. You know, it's a thirty-five foot. Am I missing something? What do you mean?
I, I, I thought that the grading plan was, was, was one of the very last things that we had, 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 had dealt with. And we tabled that waiting for, because we, I thought we had everything else pretty much agreed on. And we just needed the council to approve something before we did the grading plan. Am I in?
Right, right. And basically what they, you know, the, the preliminary plan that the council approved is, you know, been, is now, has been resubmitted as the final plan. And so, yeah, but I believe the substance of your, of the, the, the motion to table, you know, substantially it has been met. There's not been a formal council approval, but we, you know, through that iterative process, but, you know, with, between the planning commission developer and, and neighbors, you know, have produced something that, you know, is, is the plan that, you know, you, I think meets the site needs, the, uh, and the city's needs, residents need, residents desires and, uh, you know, and basically, you know, that they, the grading plan then is just kind of setting the table for that. And that approval, you know, I don't know, am I addressing your concern there, your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Donovan, my question, assuming we approve this and it goes to council, we don't see this application again, correct? It's.
That is correct.
Thank you. Commissioners, motion discussion? Commissioner Miller?
I will make a motion then that we, we send this to city council for approval of the final planned unit development for Minnesota Lakes self-storage with the seven staff recommendations.
There's been a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Keen, seconds? Is there discussion on the motion? My only comment, I won't go too long into it, because I think I made it last time. I, this, this project has substantially improved from the first presentation we saw. And I'm much, much happier with it. And, and ready to approve it, and I hope council does as well. Other discussion? Seeing none. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
All right, aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Langness?
Aye, motion carries. Good luck with council, Gary and Dick.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and, and all the hard work that you put in on this for us.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
We are moving on to item number sixteen, other business. I will kick off other business with a comment from, from Mayor Bain in conversation that I had with her earlier today. And she wanted to let all of us know that if we had been at City Hall with an agenda this long, she would have brought us a tray full of coffee. And she wanted to, to note her appreciation for our hard work and particularly with an agenda tonight. And it, and the conversation we had was partially included the eleven o'clock curfew for planning commissioners to hold a meeting and the complications that go when you hit the curfew point. So I'm, I'm pleased to, to believe we're not going to do that tonight. So. Well, we'll move on to Commissioner Gerard, or Counselor Gerard. Thank you.
I really have nothing, Eric. You stole all of my thunder. Mayor Bain does express her great thanks for a monster agenda tonight. And we, I was also at City Hall on some other business today. And we were commenting about how late could the meeting go without having another vote? And, and, and I have to claim that I'm the guy who ran one that we had to have one of those votes. I'm extremely impressed that you guys got through this in three hours. So great job, one and all, to stay on task tonight. I can answer any questions if you weren't happy to.
Commissioners?
Councilmember Gerard, I missed your name on the folks that are running for another council term.
You are correct. I am not running. That is correct.
Other comments from? Commissioner Miller?
I think we still have an opening on planning, do we not? We would welcome you back with open arms.
I had a discussion with the mayor today about filling that in with a, one more commissioner, and she continues to work on it.
And we may, we may lose a member, you know, in, in November, in, in January, I mean, as well.
It could be true.
Anything's possible. Donovan, do you have any updates for us?
I'll say that we do have an agenda for our August twenty-sixth meeting. And I will endeavor to put some zoning, you know, work, work out some improved zoning for that one. Not contractor yard. Commissioner Young, though, though, I do appreciate the need for a lot more conversation on that one. And I have my other viewpoints, I'm safe, I'm keeping my powder dry on that one, okay?
Karen? Do you have any updates?
No updates, but I wanted to congratulate Donovan on a good finish here before eleven o'clock.
And I'll go around the room. Commissioner Keen? None? Commissioner Young?
Uh, no, I just do remember some that went well beyond eleven o'clock.
Those were definitely before my time. That must have been with Chairman Gerard.
I only recall one that went that late. I think you must be referring to your city council.
No, that was, that was when Chairman Dammcheck was, was with us. Okay.
Commissioner Miller?
The only thing I would say is if it is at all possible to ever get back into the, the, the chambers for a meeting, I would appreciate that. It's, uh, it's much easier than this, and I think we could social distance. And I think we could wear a mask if that's necessary and conduct a meeting, and it would be a lot easier.
Well, I, I, I could leave it to Counselor Gerard as well, but I believe the city council just approved spending like seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars on a whole pile of technology upgrades, which included, I believe it's laptop or computer upgrades in the council chambers that are better capable of doing remote meetings, so they can be transported upstairs, and then we can socially distance. I, I believe that was the hurdle, and it was literally just approved. So I'm with you. I hope it's right around the corner.
It's one of the hurdles. To expand on it a little bit, there's been a number of hurdles with the whole technology issue. So that this, what was approved Monday night was not only computers for the council, but for the staff, because we were fairly confident that there's going to be a fair amount of work at home for quite a while here. And including if you got a phone call, it'll ring right at your house. They'll be able to make outgoing calls, and it'll look like director's office in, at the city hall. So it'll be very, very transparent. The part for the meetings, yes, we did get some additional laptops, but it's really some, there's some background technology that is going to allow both in-person with remote participation. So if, you know, a lot of people are nervous going into public spaces. So this will allow people to comment remotely like they do now. But maybe the commission or the council would be live, and, and then we would to be taking other comments over Zoom or whatever the technology is. So it's, it's all kind of enveloped together to, to really smooth things out, because this, this is here for a while. And the council is just as excited to get back to meetings in person. We would rather do that, the dialogue, I think, in general goes smoother. You know, there's a little more conversation, but we're, we're, it's a different time right now, and this is what we have. And it, and it's worked okay. I, I wouldn't give it five stars, but I'll give it three, maybe even four. We're even almost down pat with the Pledge of Allegiance, almost being half of us in the same line.
I had it so down pat, I did it twice today. Commissioner Batty? Did you update, we're going around the room. Updates? Did you have any?
Ditto on live meetings. I'm, I'm ready.
Okay, Commissioner Brink?
Nothing for me.
And I have no additional updates that have not been discussed. We are moving on to item number seventeen on the original and amended agenda adjournment. Was that a motion, Commissioner Young?
Move approval.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Brink? That is a non-debatable motion at ten oh three with seventeen items on the agenda. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote?
I can. Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Langness?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Aye.
Good night.